Any corrections? None being, they'll stand approved. Next item is time for public comment. If anyone who would like to speak on any matter that is not in the agenda, please do so at this time. Yes. We all know you, but please state your name.
My name is Ken Green. I had a difficult time at the last commission meeting, the 16th, of not bringing up the Rec Commission. I went to the focus group and I was pleased to see Commissioner Dale there. I'm pretty narrow-minded and pretty nearsighted when it comes to what my view ought to be. And I tried to go to the focus group. I understood that it was at 8:00 and 4:00. Went at 8:00 and I would say that the majority of it was negative. I'm trying to get a mindset of the positives so that I can make a wise decision also. Needless to say, I didn't get it at the first one. Asked if I could stay for the second one and was told by Michelle of Novak Consulting that I couldn't stay for the second one. I didn't even know there was a second one. Didn't know. I thought that according to the paper, it was 8:00 and 4:00. I didn't know there were special interest groups within that. We were given 45 minutes. There were probably 10 or 12 of us there, so if you figure that out, by the time they ask the question, you might have two minutes, which is less than the time I have here today. Unless we're speaking of feral cats and then that can go on probably 20 minutes. But when I was told that I couldn't come to the next ones, I would like to know, and maybe you guys don't, I'm sure somebody knows who the special interest groups are and what they were throughout the day, so that I can get a mindset of what they're thinking too, because mine's pretty negative. I want to hear some positive out of it to where I can make a decision. That's the first thing I want to bring up. The second thing I want to bring up is that my granddaughter, who has been a lifeguard for the last six years at the big pool, was asked to go to the board meeting last night. And she was contacted by one individual saying, "Before you go to the board meeting, you need to come and have a special meeting with us beforehand." So she calls me. I said, "That's fine." She said, "Well, you go with me." I said, "I'll be glad to go." I don't know if that's protocol for somebody to be on the agenda and before they can attend a board meeting, that you're to have a special meeting with somebody to find out what's going to be said? But I don't think that that's right. So it happened to be that I attended the board meeting. And under that statute, I would like to know, under that 121928, if the city is overseeing the Rec Commission, we have an obligation. And I know Novak Consulting is, that there's a lot of decisions based upon that, but we cannot allow that thing to go down the tube for the next few months until April or May or whenever. Because there was decisions being made last night there that I was surprised, first of all, for the condition that we're in, that there wasn't many commissioners there. None. We have new board members that were appointed, I assume, by the city that were there. We have a new interim director that's there, that that was her first, that was her first time at the board meeting. And there were decisions and expenditures being made that were brought for discussion that were actually brought up and approved last night. And I mean, large expenditures. There were some that were brought that day that no one knew who was to bring them, so they brought them and they were in none of the board members' packets. How do you make a decision when we're in the process of what we're in right now? How can you expect the board to make that kind of a decision when none of it's in the packets, none of it's brought up before the board? And then we have board members who were... I wanted to see how we were nominating board members. They mentioned two names, and I'm going to get the minutes because I couldn't understand it. They nominated two board members and somebody in the crowd said, "Oh, I would like to be one also." They nominated her, not saying that good or bad, they nominated her and approved her at the board without any resume, any type of qualifications or anything else that night last night. I don't understand that. I thought that we were trying to get this thing together and to try to figure out what the heck's going on, but it's not happening.
Are you ready for responses?
Sure.
Okay. Okay. Novak Consulting was hired and they have several different things that they have to do. And they also had a few days where they, in our agreement, that they would be here meeting with different people. They met with city commissioners, two or one at a time, because only two can be at together at the same time. They met with other, like Y M C A, probably the college, or there are other groups they met with. I imagine, I did not see their agenda, but I imagine that the one you went to was open to the public, the next one was for a specific group. And then I think there was another public meeting later in the day or the following day to give people due to work chances to go there and voice their opinions. So I don't think they were just saying that you can't come to the second one because you came to the first one. They were certain time slots. We each had 40, we had 45 minutes.
They are really strict.
Yes.
Who was "we"?
The city commissioners. When we met with Novak...
Commissioner Dale was at ours.
He's welcome to do that, but individually...
So why aren't we not welcome to do that? I mean, I thought this was a focus group that, you know what, that we were trying to...
Because they have...
Although my group was negative. That's what's sad.
Well...
The feedback from the 8:00 AM general meeting, I got some feedback that that one didn't go well either. And I guess whether the perspective is I didn't get enough time to talk, or in some cases, there were some people that felt they didn't get any time to talk because it was dominated by one or two participants. And I don't know who the participants that got up and talked were, and I don't know who the participants that didn't. But that it was focused, you know, the question out of the gate in a lot of those instances is strengths, you know? What are your heartburns? What are your good experiences? Where do we get to go forward? And at every other meeting, they were able to get past those first two questions. And at 8:00 in the morning, they never got to get past those first two questions because the comments were dominated by, "This is why I'm mad over whatever's happened over the last year," and never really got to the moving forward. I would certainly welcome the input of that, "What do we do moving forward?" And yeah, I know we can't recreate the focus group and time warp everybody back in time and have that go differently. But I would certainly welcome that from not just you, Mr. Green, but anybody that was in one of those and didn't feel they had the time or what they said wasn't exactly what they wanted to say, they wanted to say something else, to put that down in writing. And I think there's still time to, you know, get that off to the consultants, that that can influence their input. Now, that isn't to say if the Novak study doesn't turn out exactly the way you or Person X wanted it to turn out because they were blending the comments from 80 different participants, then that's another problem, and I don't know that I can solve that one. But I can solve the problem of the ability to get in what you wanted to make sure they heard. And if you provide that, you can seal it on an envelope. You don't have to make it available to me, and I will ensure that Novak gets that. And I've offered that to other participants who were disappointed that, again, that earlier morning one was really the one that didn't go...
Didn't go very well.
Didn't go very well.
No, and I...
And I think people understand that there's going to be negative, whether the comments are negative or positive towards any particular program of the Rec isn't the point. The point is what does the community want out of recreation? So I want to make sure that you get the opportunity to say that and to get that off to them so that that's...
I would like...
Or anybody else for that.
I would like to hear the positive, because when you drive down the road by yourself every day, alls I have is my mind.
Yeah.
You know?
And I would agree with your comments.
And when you think about those things and you think about, pretty soon you have no one else to say, "Hey, that's not right," or, "You know what? What do you think about this?" I thought that's what the focus group was about.
Right.
And when I go back...
It is, for the consultants to be able to think about.
How did I miss out from 8:00 and 4:00? How did I, I always thought there were only two. Everybody I visited with thought there were only two. Then you see all these other people throughout the day walking in and out, and then you're kind of surprised too. You see, why, you know what, if we're going to get this thing behind us, let's get it out there.
So...
I mean, that's, I think, how we solve the problem.
So the rest of the schedule for them were targeted groups on targeted topics. And then there were, there were generally kind of general periods set up for everything that wasn't being specifically addressed. So there was one for, well, and there was more than one because they wanted to hit the different groups. The city commissioners had an opportunity to comment, but that took more than two meetings because they can't be in the room together, right? In a majority, or a quorum of them can't be in the room together. The employees of the Recreation Commission had an opportunity to give info on things they saw. Users of, like Youth Sports, I think, was one. Oh, yeah, Jennifer Youth Nancy, you probably have this thing memorized.
Yeah, so we broke it up into groups so that everybody would have their fair share of time, and also so that people could feel like they could give their feedback and not be scrutinized by someone else such as an employee. Or we felt like for them to have unbiased results, that was the best way to handle it. So employees, the Garden City Rec Board, our commission, those both had to be broken up, like Matt said. We also had a group for users of the Rec that was advertised at the Rec. We also had a group for users of the Y that was passed out at the Y, flyers for that. We also had a specific group for users of Core, and those, we had flyers that were passed out at Core. We had the two open community sessions, just to kind of as a catch-all for, "If you don't use the Y, if you don't use the Rec, if you don't use Core, if you're not in Youth Sports, if you're not in one of these other groups that's already being talked to, come to this open session if you have something to say." So we tried to, we even included a session for Project Fitness that is separate, and a yoga person, and the Lee Richardson Zoo, and some of the other...
Y M C A, yeah.
Yeah, some of the other educational pieces.
So can I get a list of those?
Absolutely.
Yeah, absolutely. I have a...
Yeah, it's not, and I think there were some comments alluded to either during the 8:00 or immediately after the 8:00, that, you know, whatever, this is fixed, or this is all predetermined, or this is all...
That's exactly what we heard.
And...
And you know what?
You know, we're probably not going to change anybody's mind that already thinks that. You're predisposed to thinking that way.
I'm not...
We're not going to influence that. But if you want a list of the, in your words, special interest group, I would say various stakeholders in the world of recreation and the community, you're absolutely welcome to that.
You know, and I'm not, I mean, right now I am, but I, you know what, I'm not that type of person. I'm pretty much, I'm pretty much open if you can get the facts.
The Novak, in the Novak group is the consultant, is the group that was hired to come down and hear those different voices, not predisposed to giving one over any greater weight than the other, and hearing, and giving their assessment. You know, it's ours to do what we want, but if you stop to plug it back into the real world and figure out, you know, how things work to implement, you know, their recommendations. But if you want truly independent, objective, third-party recommendations to your problem, then you have to treat it independently. You have to give those different stakeholders, different groups. And I would say that isn't just when you hire somebody to do a management study for recreation. I would say it's when you have an independent review of any operation. And I think the technique they applied was appropriate and proportionate to as many groups as we could jam into, 8:00 in the morning to 6:00 at night.
Well, see, I wasn't, I wasn't ready that, that there were that many in that day. I thought there was an 8:00 session and a 4:00.
I think they took lunch. I think they broke for lunch, but other than that, they were, yeah, they were packed. I mean, we can get you a calendar.
If you provide me an email address, I can email you.
I have no email, so...
All right.
I can copy it for you.
One of the few probably left. I still do have a fax machine, or you can probably by phone.
We stick it in an envelope and he drives through and picks it up down our street.
Got it. It works, it works very well.
Okay.
Okay. So are there anything else you...
Well, you had some questions about the Rec Board meeting.
And if this isn't the place to discuss that, I would like to know who I discuss it, where I go, because I'm very concerned. And the only reason I was there last night, because I was asked by my granddaughter.
Yes.
And then when I did see what had taken place, I thought, "My land." We can't wait till April or May to figure out what's going, we can't let the Rec Commission say, "Hey, look what they did." Then they run that thing even further down, and I'm not saying they are, because they're, I'm just saying there's just some things there that I think caught the board off guard. But yet they approved it? And they were just brought for discussion, and I think there's going to be some things that would be...
Those issues that you have would best be addressed at the Garden City Rec Board meeting. Our job is to select board members. We don't go in, it's just like the Garden City Housing Authority. They are separate entities. We don't go in there and tell them how to run their business. That's not our...
So they select the board members?
One of their board members. The city commission is responsible for appointing four of the five board members. And I can't at all explain to you why the statute is set up that way.
And that makes me, but I just...
The fifth board member is chosen from among the board members, and I think that's the appointment that was being considered last night.
Yes.
And I'd be more than happy to elaborate on his other concerns or afterward or whatever. I mean, I have answers, so...
You know, I've never seen, I've never seen an election of a board member done as I did last night. Somebody just raised their hand out of the crowd and you nominate them and that's done. Never seen it done that way. And if that's the way that it is, then that's not what I, you know, I thought that things were a little different than that, so...
Okay, I think probably that discussion would be best outside of this meeting, because it is at Garden City Rec Board.
So does the city feel responsible at all, other than, I mean, does it, does the city feel, as far as the people that are sitting in front of me, do they feel responsible at all to try to attend these things? We have new members there who aren't, who aren't really knowledgeable, I'm not saying knowledgeable, who are not, I don't know what the word is, but they don't quite understand all the workings yet. We have a new interim director there who was just placed there. You know, and when you see that, you guys have been dealing with it for quite a while, and we know what's happened. Why can't somebody show up to try to help, help them along, help in some of those decisions? We're going to have an answer here before long and a direction, but why let it get any further down the tube between now and April or May? So do you feel any responsibility, is all I ask? I mean, for somebody to attend and to help.
I'm not sure that we can help that much. Basically, the way I look at it, I'm waiting for this report. When this report comes in, I'll have a better understanding of what direction we're going to go. To attend that meeting, no, I didn't, we didn't plan on it. And, but I think we'll, we'll get it figured out, Ken. We'll get it figured out.
But we have several...
And it's going to, it's going to be public, and you're going to know all about it. So don't worry about it. We'll figure it out.
I worry about it.
We'll figure it out.
I understand, but...
And you'll have a chance to deal it, and you'll have a chance to discuss it.
I understand that, but with you...
Don't worry about it.
I'm going to worry about it. So that's the problem, that nobody worries about anything anymore. You know, it's not that it's a worry. You know what, I'm concerned about it. When I also, when I also hear in that meeting that the memberships do not match what's on the financial, the net revenue of the financial, I'm concerned about it. So for you to tell me not to worry about it, Mr. Fagan, you know what?
I would be too.
That's not, that's not my makeup, so...
Ken, I think we're all concerned.
Yeah, and I think, I think so. I think so too.
True. And I think that last night, if they passed and paid some bills or something last night, they were probably on a time limit in which they had to do those payments on those things coming up as far as new things in the future.
No, they weren't. And I would like to discuss that. I think you're exactly right. I think that there is a concern, and I think more than anything else, that my concern is, is that when I see that that amount of money is loaned to somebody, and you don't stay on it from now until the time that that consulting of how quick that can get away from you. And I think you all know that.
I think Mrs. Whitley would sit down and the other people from the Rec would be glad to sit down and answer these questions for you.
And that's where I'll go. So I appreciate it. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thanks, Ken.
Is there any other public comment? Okay, then we'll move on to item six.
Item 6A, governing bodies consideration approval to allow the mayor to proclaim March 1st, 2016 as Read Across America Day. Some of the...
Check.
There's been a motion in the second. Any discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, nay. Motion carried. And I'll get to that talk at Buffalo Jones.
Item 6B, governing body consideration approval to allow the mayor to proclaim the March 2016 month as Intellectual and Development Disabilities Awareness Month. Did you want to get up and speak on the, I think, mayor, after she presents, you can join her and read the proclamation.
Thank you. March is National Intellectual and Developmental Disabilities Awareness Month. The people of Mosaic serve many who have a disability, but they are not disabled. What they are able to do far outweighs their limitations. And with the help of Mosaic and their fellow community members, they are living a life of possibilities. Mosaic here in Garden City would like to invite all to attend a free, one-hour event called Discover the Possibilities, to learn more about what people with disabilities living and working in our community have to offer. You will be given a tour of our mission through stories told by the people we serve and also the families and our staff members. To attend an upcoming tour, you can contact myself, and then I also brought along some cards here for everybody. And if you have come to a tour before, we, you know, welcome you to invite your family and friends. Mosaic is a nonprofit providing a life of possibilities for people with intellectual disabilities. And today I brought Tabby Burgess with me, and she will come up to join Janet for the proclamation. Thank you.
Thank you.
Mayor, may I make a motion that we approve the proclamation as presented? Second?
There is a motion in a second. Any discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, nay. Motion carried. Okay. Whereas the month of March 2016 has been designated as National Intellectual and Developmental Disabilities Awareness Month, in order to celebrate and recognize people with disabilities. And whereas disability is a natural part of the human experience and in no way diminishes the right of people with disabilities to make choices, contribute to society, and experience in full the many blessings of American society. And whereas family members, friends, and the community at large all play a role in supporting people with disabilities as they pursue their dreams. And whereas the goals of this city properly include people with disabilities, realize full access to housing, employment, and the recreation activities which help create productive and satisfying lives, and to live as independently as possible. Now, therefore, I, Janet Adal, Mayor of the City of Garden City, hereby proclaim the month of March 2016 as Intellectual and Developmental Disabilities Awareness Month in the City of Garden City, and call upon the citizens of Garden City to observe the month with appropriate programs and activities. By the more, I encourage the citizens of Garden City to seek information from those organizations with expertise in matters concerning developmental disabilities. Sign and seal this first day of March 2016.
Item 7A, communications specialist Ashley Freeburg will provide an update on the city's recent communications initiative, and I believe she's got a...
Thank you, everybody.
You're welcome.
Thank you.
Hi, thank you.
Good afternoon, Mayor and Commissioner. In your packet is an update on some of our recent communications activities, but I just wanted to highlight a few of those. First of all, Channel 8. As you are well aware, for the last couple of years, we've had some struggles with Channel 8. We were using a series of programs to run content that weren't necessarily supposed to be used to actually broadcast content. So there were three web-based programs. So we ran into some problems with storage capacity with file size. So earlier this year, we purchased a Rushworks A-List system, which is a scheduling system for broadcast television, and it's actually the same program that the Buzzfeed system for high school uses to schedule their content. So our IT department installed that last week. And I'm happy to report that since it was installed last Monday, we haven't had any downtime on Channel 8, which was a really big deal, given that it was down a lot of the time before. So now I've been spending time over the last couple of weeks, meeting with all of the different departments to talk about content strategy for that channel. Now that we have the ability to broadcast higher quality, we still can't broadcast HD because it's not an HD channel with Cox. So, and Cox has indicated that they don't intend for it to be HD. So we can't broadcast in HD quality, but we can broadcast much higher quality than what we have been doing for the past several years. So with that in mind, I've been meeting with staff to learn from their perspective as city employees, but also from their perspective as residents of Garden City, to find out what sort of things they would want to see on Channel 8, what sort of things they might actually watch on Channel 8 other than just commission meetings. So I've got a pretty lengthy list, but I'm always happy to hear from you, to hear from the community, what sort of things. I know we've been told parades, people would like to watch parades broadcast on Channel 8, but I'm sure there are lots of other things too. So I'd like to encourage anyone who has any suggestions to let me know. And then it'll be a matter of prioritizing that list, finding the time to create those videos, and we have all the equipment now that we need. So I'm excited that we can turn Channel 8 into a communications tool that it really was meant to be. So that's the Channel 8 update. We're also looking, we put a committee together to look at a website redesign. Our current website was launched in December of 2011, and it's due for a redesign, but rather than just going with the simple redesign that we were offered by our current vendor, we wanted to go out and see what other products were available. And we know that a lot of people are looking at websites from their phones now, so we would really like to have a product that is mobile-friendly. Our current website, I would not classify as mobile-friendly, just because you can access it from your phone, doesn't mean that anybody is going to want to, because it's just not very pretty. So we put out a request for qualifications early this year, and we got several statements of qualification back. I have a committee put together of staff from several different departments who reviewed all of those, and we've picked out our favorites, we did interviews with them, had demonstrations. And so we're hoping in the next, within the next month, we'll have a proposal before you for a new website, which is pretty exciting. So that, I think, is about all I have to update on that right now. Hopefully, the next month, you'll hear more. And then just a reminder, we're all over social media. We have YouTube, Facebook, Twitter, Pinterest. Instagram is one of our newer social media accounts. So feel free to follow us on any of those. So you guys, does anybody have any questions on...
Thank you for looking this all forward.
Thank you.
Also included in the packet is the monthly sales tax report. If you've got any questions on that, I think, Lenny may be around, yeah?
I'm a little surprised that sales tax is lower than February's it was.
The, there's a little bit of an uncertainty in the February number based on some reporting, and we're still looking into that as a staff. The bad news is I'm not really sure when we're going to know the answer to the question we're asking from the state, but we're trying to work out, yeah, I mean, it's not going to change tremendously, but...
It's December numbers, right?
Right, those are December receipts.
They're still a good-sized number.
Yeah, I think it's the second-largest distribution in the city's history, probably, next to last February's, which was the largest.
It's been a while since anything new opened, and it was bound to plateau a little bit at some point in time, I think.
Right.
That's what I look at it more like is...
It's January.
Maybe people did early Christmas.
Early Christmas.
I don't roll that way, though.
Yeah, look, heading into the budget preparation, we're still going to budget the sales tax line items pretty conservatively. Year-to-date, after two months, we're $20,000 ahead of, in the city's receipt above last year's receipts and well ahead of projections. But with 10 months left in that volatile of a revenue line item, you aren't, we're not going to... We don't take for granted that we're going to have $630,000 monthly distributions every month. I think with that, I'll call your attention to the meetings of note. The Commission does have three Marches... No, three Tuesdays in March, sorry. Only one March, three Tuesdays. The five Tuesdays, so the fifth one would normally be your town hall meeting. If the Commission would like to identify that as indeed the case, and you'd need to pick a time and place, the last few have been at 7:00 PM in the Commission chambers.
It would be the 29th.
It would be.
Sounds good to me.
Just trying to think.
All right, we will have a town hall meeting on March 29th at 7:00 PM. I think with that, we're ready for item nine A, the appropriations ordinance. If approved, it would be 2407-2016A.
Madam Mayor, I move to approve appropriation ordinance number 2407-2016.
Second.
There's a motion in the second. Is there any discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, nay.
Item 11A is the governing body's consideration of a rate increase on membership and cart fees at Buffalo Dunes. And this is a carryover business item. We introduced it to you at the last meeting, so I'll turn it over to Cole to go over the background with you once again and frame the question for your consideration.
So background again. The issue is consideration approval of a rate increase on membership and cart fees at Buffalo Dunes. We presented this information a couple of weeks ago to you. Background, membership and cart fees at Buffalo Dunes were last evaluated and ultimately increased in 2013. And being said that as well, majority of those people had already upgraded. We did that in August of 2013, so majority of them already upgraded for the year, so they really haven't felt this since 2012. So we're evaluating membership and cart fees again, chose other golf courses in the region to compare membership and cart fees to those at Buffalo Dunes. Golf courses were selected based on proximity condition and ranking. Staff has gathered the following information in the process, so you can see the comparisons on the golf course, and then, see, in your packet, you have the comparable golf courses and their fees. Two weeks ago, when we were in here, we talked about, I sent out a, posted something to the golf course and sent out a text message and solicited comments. We had two comments. One of them was basically for the rate increase, and one was against. The gentleman that was against it basically just talked about, you know, being retired and on a fixed income. And so we really didn't have a lot of comment either way on this. So, you know, are, there's some alternatives that you can approve the rate of the 10% for membership and cart fees as presented, recommend other alternatives, or deny the rate increase. We recommend staff and our advisory board, alternative number one, to approve the rate increase of 10% membership and cart fees. So, do you have any questions? Did find out today that we're ranked number two best golf course in the state of Kansas that's accessible to the public, so that's another neat deal that we did for 2016.
Congratulations.
Yeah. So it's a pretty neat deal. So that's really all I have, so I'll put it... Questions? And then, we did research a little bit, Commissioner Pecosler, about the different rates and in-town, out-of-town, and weekday, weekend, and I just don't know where you stop. And all of a sudden, we'd end up with 37 different fees, and I think the way we do it, being very simple with all-inclusive or the, or just the regular membership, I think that's the best way to move forward with that, so.
You said earlier that you were bringing this before the advisory board. Did the advisory board...
Yeah, the advisory board actually initiated this. Yeah, they approved this, so.
They approved the...
Yeah, yeah, our advisory board did.
Okay.
Yeah, we've talked about it for a couple of years, and we kind of initiated this in our January meeting, and we've kind of taken this in the exercise. So no, our advisory board is definitely behind this.
Thank you. I'll move that we approve the alternative number one, 10% increase fees. Is that effective when?
We'll just make it effective today. Which is the first of March, so at least.
Yeah.
I'll second.
There's been a motion in the second. Any further discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, nay. Motion carried. Thank you.
Item 12A, governing bodies consideration approval of bids received February 23rd, 2016 for a waterline extension to serve Meadowlark Dairy LLC. The low bid does exceed the engineer's estimates, why it's not on the consentage, and the governing bodies asked to approve and negotiate a bid pursuant to the purchasing and contracting manual.
Good afternoon, Mayor and Commissioners. The extension of water to Meadowlark Dairy Nutrition Project site is a component of plat land development agreement entered into by the City of Garden City and Meadowlark Dairy Nutrition on August 14th of 2015. Meadowlark Dairy paid the city for an estimate of the water expenses. This bid will represent an amount higher than that. However, the development agreement has a provision to recuperate those costs, and the city will do that once the project has been completed. We retained professional engineering consultants to design the project. We started advertising the bids in late January and opened them on February 23rd. All bidders were also required to attend a mandatory pre-bid meeting on February 12th to discuss the scope of the project and field questions regarding the project. This project is on a very strict timeline, so we can meet the requirements of our development agreement, and also because of the working around an active construction site, there were just some things that we felt were necessary to discuss ahead of time. Two bids were received for the project and are detailed on the attached bid tabulation. Both bids exceeded the engineer's estimate. The low bid was submitted by Lead Construction of Garden City for $298,650. The engineer's estimate was $298,248, very close. The low bid is within the allowable 2% overage. The contractor has agreed to lower the bid to match the engineer's estimate. Easements and right-of-way access for the project have been obtained and are recorded, so the project may proceed as soon as possible. And we have three alternatives. First, to accept the low bid, award a contract to Lead Construction Incorporated for $298,248, and allow the mayor and city clerk to execute the contract documents when provided. Alternative two is to award the project to an alternate qualifying bidder, or alternate three, reject the bids as presented and request staff to obtain the bids. We would recommend that you pursue alternative one. Yes?
Are they going to pay the extra $40,000?
That's, that is the agreement that the city has for the development of the project that's outlined in section seven.
They just paid the $258 because they didn't know what the bid was going to be.
That was our estimate of the project cost when we first started. And I believe they had an opportunity to review those estimates and concur on all those financials before they entered into the agreement with the city.
There's no further questions. I move that we approve the low bid with Lead Construction for $298,248.
Second.
There's been a motion in the second. Any further discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, nay. Motion carried.
Item 12B, the governing bodies asked to consider and approve one reappointment and one appointment to the Police Citizens Advisory Board. Melana Johnson would be the reappointment, and Connie Bonwell would be the new appointment. There are specific spots or representatives on the Police Citizens Advisory Board based on the qualities the person brings to the board. The Melana Johnson would, her reappointment would continue to be in the African-American representative to the board. Connie Bonwell would fill a citizen-at-large category.
I make a motion that we approve the reappointment of Melana Johnson as the representative and appoint Connie Bonwell as the citizen-at-large representative.
Okay.
There's a motion in the second. Is there any discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, nay. Motion carried.
At your retreat, you established a draft set of goals. Staff, I'll credit Ashley translating what went on that entire day into a list of goals, reading my chicken scratches from the flip chart. You've had a chance to look through these. I think the, we did, at the retreat, you did a good job wordsmithing the major goals. It was the subheadings that were a little more unclear. So the objective of this agenda item is to, what we've called in the past, ratify these goals. So it's the Commission collectively saying, yes, these are the goals we set out. These sub-goals are the things that we think are appropriate to revisit on a regular basis throughout the year. They're the primary goals to which we will evaluate the performance of the staff, in particular me. And so this is, this is kind of the opportunity to formalize those. We would welcome any edits to this document as you see fit. It is your document.
Pretty much like you thought.
I agree. I think everything's in there, and it's very clear.
I mean, I move we approve the 2016, 2017 goals.
Second.
There's been a motion in the second. Is there any discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, nay. Motion carried.
Item 12D, the city commis, no, yeah, 12D. The city commission is asked to consider an easement request for a new office building at 1601 East Mary.
We have at 1601, or 1651 East Mary Street, is the, a new speculative office building that the AfC is not wanting to locate the trash receptacles on the property because of their close proximity to an alley where trash receptacles could be placed. And in this, they would, in further review of this, they would have to cross over private property to get to that alley to dispose of their trash in the trash receptacle. What this easement does is gives them permission to cross over the fire department property that is there to get to the alley to dispose of their trash in the receptacle in the alley. And you have the complete memo in your packet that details exactly what they're requesting to do. And this also, the agreement also gives considerations, and Curry Sky, which is the developer of this project, agrees to identify the city against all damages, expenses, costs, and charges. And hold on, the city for many and all claims for damages by third parties and all loss liability incurred by reason of Curry Sky's use and enjoyment of the easement, if it's granted.
We're talking about foot traffic here, aren't we?
Yes, correct.
Facility driveway or anything like that.
Correct. Could be walking, because it's a speculative building, and I'm sure there's probably going to be, could be two, three, maybe four businesses that operate out of it that they would walk across to the alley, across city property.
Would require any improvements, and if so, would those be done by the developer?
If there are, right now, the, the fire department property is paved, so it would be just, I think they would have their sidewalk along their property to the city property, which then they would walk across the easement area that's shown.
I move to approve the easement request for the new office building at 1601 East Mary.
I'll second.
There's been a motion in the second. Any further discussion?
No abstain.
Commissioner Pecosler is abstaining. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, nay. Motion carried.
Item 12E, the governing bodies asked to consider and approve a facilities use agreement between the City of Garden City, Kansas, the Garden City Recreation Commission, and Pecos League of Professional Baseball for the 2016 season. Would invite Jennifer up to...
She just magically appears.
I know it was coming. So this is, this is an agreement, like Matt said, between the city, the rec, and the Pecos League. I'm sure most of you are familiar, maybe attended a few games last year of the Garden City Wind, doing the same thing again. The rec discussed it last night at their board meeting. It does require them to prepare the fields prior to the games. The city is going to play a different role this year than we did last year, and that is to do beer and concessions and the gate. Now, as part of this agreement, Pecos League is reimbursing us for the gate fee at $10 an hour for the person or persons that we use to man the gate or rotate through to the concessions. It's our choice. We're the ones that are managing it. It will be managed through Buffalo Dunes with full. So as to budgetary fiscal note how this looks, I can't give you an exact number of what this looks like. I can tell you that it's not going to, it should be pretty even. If anything, we'll make money. I'm not going to give you a number on what that, that looks like until we've made it through a year. Once we've made it through one full year, we can discuss it and decide if it's something that we want to continue doing, or if it doesn't make sense. The only other thing that I think is of important note is 20% of concessions and beer sales will go to the Pecos League. That's the other piece of the agreement. Other than that, I can answer any other questions you have, but this is before you to determine whether or not you want to move forward and sign this agreement for this next upcoming season.
Some recaps of last year's terms that I think are still worth noting. Priority to the use of Clint Lightner is first given to this Garden City School District. Second priority is to pre-scheduled rec programming. And then, you know, based on those two things, and the sorting out of dates and all that's actually already been done, because all those things need to be done well in advance of right now. And then, the Pecos League, you know, is able to use the field and develop their schedule, coordinating it with the rest of the Pecos League around that. So the priority use is still locals, but volume-wise, I would say, based on last year, the heaviest volume of the field is probably by the Pecos League.
So is this kind of...
So is this kind of the same agreement that we had last year, I mean, except for the change in.
Other than the things that I just mentioned, other than the changes in the Buffalo Dunes running the concessions and running the gate and then those amounts that are being contributed, other than that, yes, it is substantially the same agreement Mr. Grisal went through and made those changes for us and then with some discussions back and forth with Pecos, agreed that we would put it before the commission.
In the spirit of baseball, that's kind of a Yogi Berra thing, except for the changes, it's the same.
And then on the, yeah. And then for the, do we, do we need to approve a waiver for alcohol sales down there? I mean, I don't remember if we did that last year or not.
Jake actually just did some research on this before this meeting, so he can probably answer that question for you.
I don't know the answer to the waiver. That wasn't my intention. I think that Buffalo Dunes currently has the required licensing to sell C and B, so we should be good in that respect.
And the location's been predetermined by the commission, or has been authorized by the commission in the past, if that needs to be renewed every year, it's certainly something we have time to do, but I believe the action the commission took last year made that ineligible.
Okay.
Yeah.
And we'll certainly confirm that so that everybody's on the same page.
I just, I, with Buffalo Dunes handling, I mean, they've already got the license, I was just concerned about the location.
Sure.
If we had to do a waiver for that certain location. I know that we did open up kind of the city earlier on, but if we could just kind of clarify that before league play starts, certainly. I make a motion to approve a facilities use agreement between the City of Garden City and the Garden City Rec and the Pecos League for the professional, for the 2016 season.
Okay.
There's been a motion and a second, any further discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, nay. Motion carried.
I believe we're ready for item 12F, which is the consent agenda. There are no changes to the consent agenda, so it would be items F1 and 2.
Madam Mayor, I move to approve consent agenda items F1 and 2.
I'll second.
There's been a motion and a second, any discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, nay. Motion carried. Are there no licenses this time?
We saved a lot of time having a consent agenda there. With that, Mayor, I think we're ready for commissioner's votes.
Mr. Long.
Well, the big one, I guess recently, I get to go first and everybody else, is congratulations to the wrestling team on the fourth championship for the second time and our individual champions, Mr. Nunez and Mr. Cretto and just, you know, lots of good stuff happening there and indicative of the committee as a whole, I think, so I look forward to sometime, I think in the near future, having them in and maybe recognizing them in the form of, I think that's all I have.
And I just said that, oh, I was just going to discuss this recommission situation a little bit, you know, I don't think any of, I mean, all of us up here want to make sure that this is done the right way. And I think the first step is to get this report back so we have something that we can handle. So, you know, I apologize to Mr. Green, I jumped on him a little bit, but I, I mean, I think we're all in an agreement that this has to be done, it has to be done right, we're going to get it turned around. But I think that, you know, hopefully, I mean, I've been in business for 40, 45 years and I hope maybe I'll have a little influence in this, but, you know, it's, it got out of hand, we all know it got out of hand, and now we need to take care of it. I think between commissioners and staff, I think we've done, done it right, so that's all.
Mr. Sessner.
I too would like to congratulate the wrestling team for the 6A state championship for the fourth consecutive year. We also do have a number of our students from forensics and as well as music competition that we had this last, this last weekend, go state competition. And our forensics students have qualified for state and national tournaments as well. I just noticed I had, got an email that the urgency community college judging team will be going to Australia, so congratulations to them. And then congratulations to Buffalo Dunes on being ranked second in the state for the best public golf course in the state, that's, that speaks volumes about our staff and what they do to maintain a high-quality and professional golf course in our community and it attracts, you know, it keeps people golfing here, but it also attracts tournaments, so, which is a plus for our community. Wanted to mention that I will be gone for the next city commission meeting on March 15th, I will not be here. That's all I've got.
Mr. Wood.
I'd like to agree with, with Commissioner Frankhouser and Sessna on not only the wrestling team, but all the forensic teams, the group that's going to Australia. I think that as a, as a body of commissioners for the city, we can only do so much and these young people here are tremendous ambassadors throughout the state wherever they go and compete. I think it shows that we not only have a great 457 administration here that promotes these things and our kids are really standing up to our expectations as a community and I thank them for being the ambassadors they are for 457 in the City of Garden City. Going back to one other thing that Frankhouser and I brought up is, I may be misreading or understanding of the state statute that regulates the Garden City Rec Commission. My reading of it basically says that we can have show concern and have some oversight, but very limited in, in what we can do as a body, as a city commission, because we have turned that over to a board of directors that we appoint for the five, then they establish who their leadership is, who their director will be, and all we do is through millowies and other revenue, they get that money, we just pass it on. We can't tell them exactly day-to-day how they can spend their money. It'll be neat to get back the evaluation that's coming, it'll give that board an opportunity to review that and see what plans can, can be made to go forward with and where they stand and how much they want to do. We're, we're basically on the sidelines, is my opinion by state statute, I may be wrong. That's all I have.
All right. I, I had an opportunity to attend, to attend Mosaic's Discover the Possibilities last week and it's a very enlightening experience, you, you get a tour of their facility and, and meet the residents and it's a really nice presentation, so if you have the opportunity, I encourage you to attend. And I'd like to also congratulate the Garden City High School wrestling team on their fourth championship and also I'd like to congratulate Buffalo Dunes on receiving an award of the second-best public golf course in the state of Kansas. That's all. There's nothing else?
Mayor, before we adjourn, I did have a chance to look at your inquiry, Commissioner Sessna, and Clint Lightner Field is exempt, so we can go through sales without issue there.
Thank you very much.
You're welcome.
And happy belated 18th birthday to Commissioner Frankhouser.
Gee, thanks. Am I eligible or not? I just hope I can make it to 21.
If there's no, if there's business, we'll call this meeting and adjourn.